Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, November 10th, 2014, for the purpose of a public court session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order at the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
He's got four items and a closed session. But before we start, I wanted to introduce our newest teammate, our Economic Development Director, Chuck Ridney. Chuck, and I'm going to ask Chuck to say a few things about himself, but I think this is a major coup for the city of Portsmouth. Chuck comes to us with experience in both the public and the private sector. So he's been on both sides of how to put a deal together and what it takes to get a deal together. And he's been on both sides of the Hampton Roads, so he knows the region. And as one of your colleagues said, gee whiz, we just hired a Rolodex. A Rolodex of all the contacts that he's made through the many decades.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. And I am really delighted to be a part of the Portsmouth team. I've been over in Norfolk for about 18 years. I can't believe that. But I started my career actually here at Mid-City Shopping Center when I was the manager of the United Virginia Bank at that time. And a lot of people may remember it back then, but they were two separate. There was a drive-in, and then there was the bank. And that's where I began my banking career, and I was with United Virginia Bank in retail banking, and then got recruited to go to Citibank and ran their mortgage operations for the entire Hampton Roads marketplace, basically from Williamsburg down to the Outer Banks. And following that, I always say I have three jobs that I've had, really banking, real estate, and economic development. But from there, I went to work with Dan Hoffler when he was just beginning really to take off at Armada Hoffler, and worked with him before I went to work with a company that I think all of us are now really familiar with, and that was Ray Breeden and the Breeden Companies.
Hey, new chairs?
And so I've known the Breeden Companies for quite a long time. I've always maintained my relationships with them. Then I joined a regional marketing organization on the Virginia Peninsula called the Virginia Peninsula Economic Development Council under Bud Denton, who had a really great organization put together over there. And then really, good things did happen because the two entities came together under HREDA and began marketing this great region as one. I had the opportunity to join Norfolk. I am a graduate of Lake Taylor High School and went to Old Dominion University. I was really proud of ODU. I was the alumni president back in '96, I was telling the young man back there. And it's really special to see everything that's been going on with the university. But urban economic development is what I've been doing. I'm really excited to be over here in Portsmouth doing it. We've got a lot going on. I just started Monday, a week ago, but actually, I'd kind of been in a couple of days before that. So it's been a blast so far. Look forward to working with all of you all, and please, just let me know what we can do, and we'll get it done.
Thanks, Chuck, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Our first item is a very, very preliminary report on our year-end for the last fiscal year that ended June 2014. We're on schedule to have the official audit of the capital and comprehensive annual financial reports in December. So again, this is one there.
What happened? Got new chairs and rewired the light?
We have to do the last tonight. This one cuts off the projector. Dennis?
Good evening. As John said, this is the preliminary year-end financial results, and these are not audited. We're still in the process of doing the year-end auditor audit. The auditors are still down there doing their work, so these numbers are therefore subject to change. And I apologize for the busyness of the slide, but hopefully you can see clearly in your handouts. We ended the year in a positive situation. We ended up using less fund balance than had been anticipated. The, and the revenues came in just about exactly at budget. We were $60,000 short of budget, which is just about as close as you can get. And the, we also, as a result, ended up with total fund balances of $71.4 million at the end of the year. You may recall that one of the, we had a couple of bond-related issues last year. One, we had the pension obligation bonds, which are, show up here as an expenditure because of the nature of them. We also had some bond proceeds from 2012 and other issues that were transferred to the capital projects. And this next slide shows you budget to actual, and again, you can see that revenues were just about exactly on budget, and expenditures were 6.4 million under budget. We also ended up transferring less to some of the other funds than originally anticipated. So in total, the use of fund balance was $7.2 million less than what was budgeted. The fund balance?
Carol.
Can you go back to me? You showed the pension obligation, obligation bonds under the revenue side?
They show up on-
On the expenses?
On expenditures under non-departmental. You can see that we, we had original budget of $14 million, and then the final budget of $181 million. And so the transfer or the payment which went to New York Life, which is administrator of our two closed pension plans, was $168.3 million.
So what about the revenue side? What about the $14 million?
It came from fund balance. Because we, the bond proceeds were recognized last year, but the transfer wasn't made until August of this year, so it crossed two fiscal years.
Remember, we sold the bonds in the prior fiscal year, so those proceeds go into the fund balance. And then in the last, or the last fiscal year, those proceeds then got transferred to the retirement fund.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, so last year, we had unassigned fund balance of $236.7 million, but of that, $168.3 of it was really the bond proceeds. And, you know, obviously, that created anomaly for this year, but our fund balance went down by $184.3 million primarily due to that, that transfer. And revenues increased by 2% over the prior fiscal year. Expenditures were below the revised budget by 1.8%. So our fund balance, taking into account all of the commitments that the council has made so far, all of the appropriations, also taking into account the, the backstop for the school health claim costs and the debt service sinking fund that we, we set up with the current 20-year-15 budget, the fund balance above the 15% policy limit is projected to be $6.2 million. And-
And that's already taking account the building back here at 801, as well as the recreation facility, right?
Yes, sir. Everything that has been appropriated or even the soft commitments like the, the school healthcare claim costs are already reflected in that number.
That's good.
So again, we're good news at the end of the year, in a very positive state. One thing I would say is that you may recall, as part of our budgeting process for capital projects, we are, we have been trying over the past several years to do cash-funded projects, particularly for items that are really capital maintenance in nature. And the, the fund balance has been the source of money to transfer to, to the capital project fund. So we want to continue doing that so that we don't have to borrow, particularly not to borrow for, for items that don't have a long life. And so it's healthy that we have this, but we want to continue to generate surpluses at the end of the year that we can redirect to capital. And many cities do it that way, where they, they know that they're, they're going to end up with some money at the end of the year that can be used for capital in the following year.
We just don't have much to play with, so we don't-
Yes, sir.
Now, what is the 15% number now? Is it 34 million or 35?
36.6.
36.6.
Because every time that the, the budget gets increased for additional expenditures, that, of course, increases that 15% of our gap.
Okay, all right, very good.
And just to remind you of our regular financial reporting schedule, as John noted, we, we had, we had an optimistic date for presenting the CAFER of November 25th, or December 9th, which is when we would typically target to present the CAFER. The, the staff and the auditors have been working furiously, but I, I think, given where we are, that December 9th is, is going to be the, the date that we'll be presenting the CAFER to council, the auditor will be. And as you, as you can see, we have, the, the next quarterly report will be on January 27th, and that will really be our mid-year budget update to council, where we'll provide you with some additional trend and forecast information as well. And we're, we're in the process now of sending out budget instructions for the next fiscal year, so the budget development season is, is already starting.
And by the way, I sent you a copy. We have been recognized by GFOA for the format of our budget. And this recognition has been continuous for the last 24 years?
28.
Was it 28 years? So we, we produce, you adopt a budget that's very transparent, apparent, that has a lot of information in it, and it's useful not only to our citizens, but anybody that wants to figure out where money comes from and where it goes.
We also, even though we had a challenging CAFER development year last year, we also received, again, the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which, which demonstrates that our, our CAFER conforms with best practices. And the, the number of comments that we've had on the CAFER this year were the fewest number. I think we only had six comments, and they were relatively minor. So I want to recognize and commend the accounting staff, who really did a tremendous job putting that CAFER together. For many of them, it was the first time they had ever done a governmental CAFER, so it was a, it was a big achievement.
Are there any hiccups right now?
No, we're, we're moving along, and we, you know, we have, as we do every year, some, you know, some issues that come up as we are in the process of closing out that need attention and correcting, but there's no major hiccup in the process.
As we, as we start the budget, I know we've got some other things we talked about, but remember the, the piece about the disabled veterans?
Yes, sir. Got that.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
What is, what do you, the 2% increase, where do you, where did that come from, do you know?
It depended on revenue.
Yeah.
It was, it was based on our forecast of overall changes, and the, the 13 budget, the revenue forecast was fairly conservative, and we looked at what, as we do every year, we look at what revenue trends are actually occurring and continue to fine-tune those.
Anything spiced or nothing noticeable?
Nothing noticeable.
2%?
You guys fact them in, the constitutional changes we just had?
Oh, yeah. Well, yes, sir.
We got that in too.
That will be going on.
All right. Thank you very much, Carol. Nice jacket.
Our next item is zoning ordinance amendments. This goes back even before the last meeting. Over the last year or so, we were discussing with you, you directed me to come up the zoning ordinance and start the process of amending where it is needed. That's about a 600-page document. And with any document that's that big, there's bound to be some inconsistencies, some things that don't make sense, some language that needs to be cleared up. And we, back last summer, we laid out a plan for you to start that process. And the first step of that process came to you at your last meeting. Some 26 amendments, and it was in this package. Those amendments had been considered by the Planning Commission and recommended to you for approval. Your process, you have to have a required public hearing, and you had that public hearing at your last meeting. And then what you do is have two readings on the proposed amendments. Once the recommendation comes to you, and once the public hearing is closed, you can amend any or all of the items in, in the recommendation from the Planning Commission. It doesn't restart the process at all. You don't have to have another public hearing on it. And so picking up on the discussion at the last meeting, there seemed to be a desire to possibly amend some of the amendments that are in that package. And so we wanted to put it on the agenda tonight for your discussion, and we'll go through that so that we can listen closely to you. And if your desire is to make some amendments, we can get those amendments to you at the balance at the end of this week. And then we'll put this back on the agenda for the Monday night, two weeks from now, and then it'll be on Tuesday. And so hopefully, through that process, we'll have the language exactly like you want. Bob will tell you that your option is to either approve it in part, I mean, in whole, approve some, amend some, approve some, send some back. Or not approve any of them. But again, but just because it's before you doesn't mean that your hands are tied. You can make the amendments. And so with that, what we'd like to do is step you through what was in that package and cover those two points, those couple of points that were, that you had the most questions about. Okay?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor Wright, vice chairman of the council. We're going to walk through some of the issues regarding the zoning ordinance. Just following up on what John said there. We did have quite a large number of items, and as, as a warning, there are more coming. And I think council is going to be, actually, if you want to, these issues worked out, especially one of the competitiveness, things that are in a pretty hard look. Of course, working with the zoning ordinance every day, we run into things that we realize are either, some are technical tweaks, some are operational problems. We're also listening to council when they're giving us direction guidance. Trying to come back with you with the appropriate amendments. So what we want to do tonight is walk through a little of this and discuss any questions you may have. As John said, there's a number of options for you to take a look at. I do have John Hartley with me tonight, who also knew John. Hopefully, the two of us, we can answer any technical questions you may have.
What's happening? What you do?
I didn't do anything. I didn't do anything. It did itself.
Blame it on the new guy.
He was sitting over here. Okay. Just to run very quickly into the current status we have here. As John said, this one to the Planning Commission, and we've been working with the Planning Commissioners for a while. In fact, since I started back in September of 2013, we started the conversation with the Planning Commission on some of the zoning ordinance issues that were already coming up. And of course, they recommended approval of the 26 amendments you have that was in front of you on your meeting on October 28th. At that time, you wanted to have a work session on it, so here we are tonight on November the 10th. The rest of the schedule you have in front of you would be a scheduled consideration for your first reading on November the 25th, and then final second reading December the 9th. And I did note, as John did, you have the option for bringing this back for work session if you want to have further discussion of this before it gets to the end. Let's try to say that. Okay. Again, the options you have, and there are more than this. This is one of those, you can take all sorts of directions, but one you have obviously is the one, you could just proceed with what you had, move forward. They're all numbered, as you know, in your package, 1 through 26. You could modify a specific item if you know there's some language you'd like to get fixed. We have enough time for now and your next meeting to make modifications if you'd like. If you have enough concern with it, you don't think it could be modified, you want additional public comment or whatever, you can remove that item, you can bring that back later. Again, we're going to have more amendments coming too, so if you want to kick something back, you know, we can bring that back forward. If there are items in there you don't like at all, you can just take them out, just remove them permanently. And of course, you can always refer things back to the Planning Commission, give them direction to, to make corrections for you. So from your 28th meeting, there were a couple of items that were supposed to seem to specifically get city councils concerned. They asked, we're going to go through those. One is a family daycare home. This is an application that you're pretty familiar with. You get a number of these use permits on a regular basis. Two of the reasons we got into this, or I say, three reasons we got into this discussion, there's been concern raised about how much time it takes these small business operators to go through our use permit process, and as you all know, that's three to four months time for them to first make contact with us before they get through second reading. Concern about the fee they have to pay. Our use permit fee is $660. That covers our legal advertising requirements and other things, and so there's been concern raised. It was a big, a large burden for a family daycare home. So it's really those two issues. The other thing I'd mention is that city council has been pretty consistent about telling us to stick with these conditions. And so in every, you probably noticed everyone, those use permits you get, this is the council's standard list of conditions, and we just made a note, the 1,000 feet from adult uses that truly operates in reverse, where adult uses are supposed to be 1,000 feet away, we like to tell them to stay back as well. So that's the 1,000 feet. So that is standard.
Tell us what adult uses are.
Excuse me?
Tell us what adult uses are.
An example of adult use.
Oh.
I know it is. I want to make sure everybody knows.
Oh, yeah, like, like a Go-Go, like a Go-Go club, or play selling pornographic materials, adult magazines, things of that nature. I'm sorry. Haven't asked that question in a while. So that's pretty much the standard. Just for your, we went back and looked over the last two years, you've had seven applications, you've approved all seven of them, and that seemed to us to be, you know, one of the reasons we read back to you what we brought in your package, which was a consideration of making this an administrative approval. Make these a part of your zoning code, put the conditions in the code, and do it administratively. That would address the timing, address the fees. And there were some concerns there about, you know, the neighbor, neighbors' input, so. So here's basically where some options you have, and back to what we were talking about before. Number one, what we have proposed to you is making it a by right use, making it administrative approval, and that's what you have in your packet. I will notice number two, that's what you have in the current code, with a use permit, going through the full process, so, you know, opting for number two, you just, status quo. Opting for number one, it's what's in your package. There are some potential other options. Just to give you an idea, if we were, if you were to send it back, the kind of things we'd look at, try to address those concerns. One, we could go to a special exception process. That could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's faster. It's about 30 to 45 days. It's a $350 fee instead of a $660. There's public notice, there's a public hearing, it's just not city council conducting that, so that's an option. One, which is similar to, I believe, what you've done for people raising chickens at home, we could have an administrative approval, we could do a public notice. If anyone raises an objection, we could kick them into either a use permit or a special exception. If none of the neighbors complained, we could leave it as an administrative approval. And again, the fees can be addressed, you know, at any time if the concern is addressing fees. So that's sort of a, just to walk you through that particular issue, and I know that some of the concerns that were raised were about public notice. So again, the current process you have is the full, you know, public hearing process with the Planning Commission, city council, that's got the most public engagement opportunity. I think the Board of Zoning Appeals, obviously, that serves a very similar purpose. It just changes the body that's making the final decision. And of course, the, the administrative approval of a public notice, if you want to just stress public notice, you want to provide faster, less expensive, unless there's objections, and then you would get the ones that would, that would have neighborhood concerns being raised. So just sort of lay that out on the table.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm all for number four. As far as I'm concerned, public notice is imperative, and $660 is really too much money. I don't have any problem with 300 and whatever. I, I don't want it to be $50. You need to have a commitment to what you're doing, and your neighbors need to know what you're doing. So to me, number four is, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I guess I'm the corporate here from last meeting, but I agree with Elizabeth. But we, but we got to, we got to fix the, I can deliver number four if we fix the fee. Who's the administrative approval? You?
It could either be me or the zoning administrator. You know, we could write up, we want planning director to be the approving authority, we can do that. I would recommend that only in this case because the kickback is to go into a use permit process, most likely, and we would handle that. So my recommendation would be that as a-
I want to keep it simple, but I want it to be affordable.
Why couldn't it go just to the planning board if they approve it, it doesn't go to-
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
As an office issue, you're the phone.
Answer, I'll let George chime in if he has a difference of opinion. Planning Commission is advisory to city council, except for a few specific things where they've got authority from the General Assembly. I'm not sure they would have authority to act on that, but you have unless-
That's a body that you don't, you can't really delegate duties to. They have statutory duties that they're limited to.
On your question of the number four, we can always go back and take a look at adjusting the fee for the smaller scale. You know, the main reason the fees are high is because our legal advertising requirements, by friend of that drives the fee. The $660 doesn't cover the legal ad fees anymore. They're very expensive. Only people recognize how much it costs to run those legal ads.
But if you go to the by right, do you have to advertise?
No.
So we eliminate all those, all that advertising?
Right. I mean, that, yeah, exactly.
But you eliminate the publicity advertising. Unless you write it into the code that you have to send-
And I think, you know, we could do the version where you do-
Why can't we change the code to say you have to notify?
Well, that's what I'm talking about number four. If that's what you're interested in, which would be-
Because I think the person next door ought to know that-
Yeah.
They need to get a letter. I don't care about it being a Virginia pilot.
In that case, in the event there's opposition to it, so I don't want to be handling the opposition. If there's opposition to it, that becomes a city council matter, and we'll let the city council-
What form of opposition, and how much constitutes opposition?
The way we do it right now, if you get a letter of opposition, that would bring it, that would bring it forward. It's pretty low standard.
One objection, it would come back to council. Is that correct?
It would go to the use, condition use.
It would kick in a use permit process for this.
The process for family daycare homes under, under the item four is fairly specific. You have to receive a written objection to a family daycare home. And if that's received, then it, then there's a referral to either the Board of Zoning Appeals under the special exception or a use permit to city council. And it's, it's, so it really becomes, one, an issue of, of if you want that, that notice, ability to, to object, then four is the way to go. The second question then becomes, do you want the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider, hear the public, and, and consider the item and, and make a decision, or do you want to retain that as a governing body?
And the other items I just mentioned, we're working on a special exception process because you should have one in the zoning ordinance. You don't have that process.
But there should be continuity in terms of whatever the guidelines are. If it's going to be applicable for the community, it should be for every community to adhere to the same system of guidelines. Otherwise, we are disseminating-
And what we were proposing was those standard set of conditions would be the operating conditions. And again, if we get written opposition to it, we would advise the applicant, we need to go through the use permit process, and we can work on an alternative fee. And that would be something you'd have to take up-
How much are we spending advertising this, the city?
On?
What does it cost? You say the 600 bucks that we're charging now, it doesn't hurt. It's $7.75, is usually a-
It varies. It depends on how many items you-
We typically spend $1,000 for each item when we advertise it.
It's very expensive. For each meeting or each item?
Hold up, guys. Look one at a time. Come on.
For the planning commission items, we typically average around $1,000, whether it's a rezoning or a use permit. The fee for a use permit is $660. The fee for rezoning is 880.
Is that per permit, or is that everything that you list in that week?
It's on an average what, what each ad costs.
Well, let me, let me explain to you this way. We get a bill from the newspaper for the, for the amount of legal ad. Typically, our agendas are relatively small. There's not a whole lot of people splitting the cost. So to break, try to break it down, you know, one application, if this one application came by itself, it would, it would be more than the fee. That's what I was putting basically.
Is there consensus on number four, with no fee, with notice two?
No, no.
Uh-uh. No. No. No.
The fee 350, I missed.
Yeah, but we're still, no, we still end there yet. Yeah, but we still, no, we still end there yet. Holy, we're not going to be paying...
$700.
If someone comes and wants to start a daycare, if we're gonna, how much are we spending on the notification? Holy damn. How much are we spending?
We could spend upwards of a $1,000 an hour.
And the city should, should eat that cost?
Absolutely not.
That's not for one, one item. That's for everything they listed.
I understand.
But if it's only one, it's a thousand.
But if it's only one, then it is.
That's not, that's not the case.
But number four, what we're saying is for these family daycare homes. We're not talking about advertising on the newspaper. We're talking about a letter to the neighborhood, like you get in a zoning.
And if it gets missed, then it's going to be coming back to us, and then we just create a mess.
Then they've got to pay, now they've got to pay more money, and they've got to go through the process.
What I would, what I would suggest is, based on your comments, we'll do the administrative process. We'll send the letters out to the adjacent property owners. If we get written, if we get a written opposition to it, it will go through the use permit process.
But, but there should be some fee with that because...
That's full fee.
That's full fee then.
No, I'm talking about number four, to, to send letters out to the...
Okay, for an administrative approval.
Yeah.
Okay.
And people's time.
Sure.
We're not putting no value on that use permit.
No, no.
I mean, that use permit stays with that property and that house forever, right, John?
Goes with the land.
Right? George?
Goes with the property.
Use permit?
Use permit goes with the property.
Stays with the property. That's the value. Yep. All right.
Yeah, I mean, that's a $250 thing to me. You don't, we're using all our time here.
Yeah, but I'm...
I think we ought to be consistent.
Right.
Whatever the process or procedures are, regardless to where the communities are, if you have a set criteria set in place, for what it should be, it ought to apply across the land.
How about if we do, how about if we do this? How about if the fee administratively be 350, and if there's no negative comments, that's all? If there's a negative comment that triggers the conditional use permit, then it's an additional fee of 250 to bring it up to the 600.
Good.
That sounds great.
Well, all right, move on.
We'll bring, we'll work that language up for you.
Sounds good.
And we'll get it out by Friday.
And we'll get the fee.
Still costing us, honestly. I mean, I just thought, you know, we got a use permit every meeting.
We're actually going to advertise one item. I mean, we're advertising the whole, the whole meeting.
Hey, Sunday I'm calling you. You hear me?
Monday, Tuesday?
Now, I'm calling you to say, pick up your advertising.
Second item, is an issue came about accessory apartments.
I think it's to be consistent.
And this is one of those, I think you've got really two options, in my opinion. Leave it as is, or go with what has been provided to you. There's not a whole lot of options here. Code is pretty straightforward right now. We have, we allow accessory apartments. It does have standards, what you see in the bullet list. Those are requirements you must meet to have an accessory apartment. The one thing that differentiates what we propose from what's up there today is the current code has a restriction on being employees of the household or family members. I think most of you are aware from good zoning practice, we don't like to regulate people. We like to regulate land use. We have an awful lot of people who are trying to...
I'm glad you said, hold on, you want to regulate land use?
Regulating land use.
Then should we put a cap on how many daycares in a neighborhood?
Good question.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
So, Battaway's got 180 houses. They all can have daycare?
If there, if there's, if there's demand, if there's demand for the service.
That's right. The neighbors don't complain.
The neighbors don't complain.
To have neighborhoods of daycare centers.
That's a, that's a generally, generally accepted way you do zoning, is to regulate the land use and try to avoid regulating. It was years ago, I always tell the story, when Van Lefko was on the planning commission, city council in those days used to require that the use permit went with the person, went with the applicant. And you voted against every one of those, and you just always say, I'm not doing that. That's not good zoning practice. We should be regulating the land use, not the applicant. In this case, we're writing out, and I would just say this, just because the tenant in an accessory apartment's a relative, doesn't mean you've got a good tenant back there. And I think that's for us, and they're very difficult.
That's our understanding.
And it's very difficult to regulate.
Hard to evict.
There is no guarantee that the tenant, and we do have standards, as I was showing before, that the, that the structure has to comply with to get an accessory apartment in there. So, one of the things we see happen, I just, it's been going on as the population ages, and people are trying to build more housing for in-law suites, granny flats, we used to call them years ago. And what happens, in fact, the current house I'm in right now, is the exact same thing happened, where the property owner built an addition on the house, and his in-law passed away, and he ended up in foreclosure because he was expecting rent for what he built for him. So, one of the ideas being, people are going to make an investment to build an accessory apartment. The idea being that if something happens to that family member, you now trap them with an expense and no way to recoup anything. That's just, I'll call that from planning practice. You don't need it, you don't, you're not required to make the changes, sort of pointing out the issue to you, that people are making investments in their property to take care of family members is one, one thing. And, and what happens, then if the family member doesn't occupy, or only occupies for a short amount of time. I'll mention one other place that you're familiar with, East Beach. I know Chuck, East Beach and Norfolk, they have accessory apartments all through East Beach in their housing there. It's very standard, help the property owners meet their mortgage obligations by a little rental income. This is not going to be something we'd expect to see everybody doing, but, but that's the issue, and that's why we raised it. And I just do that, what we said...
So, currently, we're saying only family members or employees can live in those mother-in-law suites.
That's correct. How do you regulate that?
Yeah, I was going to say...
That's, how do you regulate?
Everybody's in Portland's are cousins.
They're related in some way.
As you're standing right there, it's virtually impossible to regulate.
It is.
I think it's fine to change it.
Change it to allow them to do it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I can show you a house right now in Craddock that's got the same thing, they converted a garage. I think I called you on it. Didn't I call you on the house that was in Dell? The guy said, no, I live in the garage, right?
That's a difference.
Well, I mean, that's what we're creating, and we're trying to clean the city up. And I mean, you said East Beach. Are we going to do that in River Point?
Maybe not River Point.
Why not?
The mayor's got about a million and a half dollars invested there.
You still have to have a permit to create the apartment, correct?
That's correct. This would be a way of legalizing, providing a legal way to do what's going on out there. Yes, these would all be legally created.
You already have houses that were two stories, and, I mean, and we, we have some messes over there, you know? The drug-infested, I mean, we're given...
But this isn't changing that.
No.
Where you're allowing them to create apartment in the back, or add on to the back of the house to make it addition, a, a, a different home, pretty much apartment, right?
Well, see, that, that can be done now, and the criteria is that it's got to be a relative. And then, that's really impossible for us to enforce because we don't know who's candidate who. And so, what this does, it's legalizes the aspect of writing out to a non-relevant authority or a non-employed, which is probably happening now anywhere.
And supports property rights to, I like that.
It's got to go through all the, all the building process. They got to go through all the zoning and all that anyway, so.
And I just mentioned, as you know, all these items in your package are numbered. If you decide you don't like something, you can pummel out.
I dare say that, that number three says it's not being enforced now.
Almost impossible, unless somebody complains and that sort of sporadic enforcement.
Okay.
Those are the two items you had the most discussion about at your council meeting. Now, we're going to go through a number of things that are in there. We don't, we didn't list all of them on there for, for the sake of time. We're working, have to do this a little better the next time. We've already had over 30 in our next list, but then where we're headed. These are the significant, what we call significant changes in there. Sort of walk down the list. I think you're aware of the heavy industrial use issue. We had that briefing with city council back in August, I believe, going through that discussion. We discussed the issue, there's one of those impediments to development, the lazing requirement on buildings. That's the windows on corners provision that's in your ordinance. I think if your council meeting, council meetings, I think you raised a question about the construction equipment, storage, residential areas, and that's in there. Annual permits for construction trailers. Again, we're addressing sort of ongoing complaints from residents, ongoing concerns from council members.
It defines, defines construction equipment to, to be what?
I moved on you.
Which, which, the construction equipment we've got in the code there for the...
We define construction equipment.
I don't have the number. Hold on here. We'll get that for you. It is defined in there as what, what is regulated construction equipment as opposed to...
If trucks stand up in the air.
Okay, we'll come back, let John look that one up. But it is defined in, in the, in the code there. And the last one here, I think we discussed this breweries and brew pubs. This is a 2012 general assembly change, and we're bringing our code into compliance with the general assembly's direction on promoting that, that industry and those uses.
The example for requiring annual permit for construction trailers and yards, is that addressing the piece in Newport?
That's exactly the issue we're trying to address.
How do they just get permits when it's supposed to be a resident?
Put out there to begin with.
Well, that's some, some of the language in the code is a little, a little squirrely when it talks about a construction trailer. I gave an example of the question. You know, there's a difference between a big project, let's say, a Newport that came in and was going to do hundreds of units. And our code is talking about, you know, I'm building a house, or I'm building a CVS store. And so, it says, you can put the construction trailer out there until you get a certificate of occupancy. Well, when you're building something as large as a neighborhood, what is that point? And we're trying to clarify, it doesn't matter. We just don't think the construction trailers ought to just sit out there perpetually.
It's not even being used there. It's you being used on the...
For all the reasons.
For the backpack, I mean, the tunnel.
And we're trying to clean that up.
Clean that up.
Why did we issue permits?
By them to do it.
For, for another trailer?
When we're trying to clean the other one up.
Yeah.
What'd you say, John?
Under the current ordinance, they're, they weren't required to get permits because that's the way the ordinance reads now. What we're proposing is an, I'm sorry. What we're proposing is an annual permit, so that each year they have to come back in and renew it. So, in the case of Newport, we can say, no, we're not going to renew this permit because you're operating outside of the, the bounds of, of what we would normally permit.
You're not working on Newport. You can't have a trailer for that.
So, you're saying the trailer that was just placed there?
Placed there, mhm.
This, they, they didn't have to have permits to do so?
Under the current code.
And, and stockpiling all the equipment and all that?
So...
We've heard you. What we're trying to do is deliver what you ask us to do.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Keep looking for that equipment. Okay, a few other, what I call fixes. And, you know, we work through the code on a regular basis. We come across things that are, are either problematic or whatever. I'll go through a few of these. We do have a requirement, the industrial district requires a use permit for a sign. It's the only district, the only sign that requires that. Really not very logical to do that, so we want to take that out. The peer review committee, so I'm in the city attorney's, that's for historic district appeal. Current code, I think, believe, John explained this at the last council meeting, is a two-member appeal committee, the city attorney, myself. Number one, committees of two aren't very good. Number two, the city attorney then can't represent the city if we can appeal. And so, the plan there is to change that appeal committee, create a three-person panel. We have some, some minor modifications working through, the duties between the zoning administrator and the planning director. I've mentioned this before, about trying to, to take some of the planning directors, sort of unify control over so many things, and putting that in a more appropriate place according to good zoning practice. Military notification, I think you're aware, we're required, that's one of the driving forces in the way we handle business, we're required to notify the military installations when we get applications within 3,000 feet of their installation. We're going to change the notification from 10 days to 30 days prior to, so we're bringing our notification, we're, we're doing that by practice already. We're getting the code changed to rectify that. Bed and breakfast, Old Town and Port Norfolk, that's the way it originally was. The current ordinance dropped the restriction that it should be just in those two neighborhoods. We're proposing to put that back in. Those were the two neighborhoods that were identified as being appropriate for bed and breakfast.
You're taking that out.
Putting it back in.
Putting it back in.
So, what we're doing is it's now, but everybody's in.
So, I can't open a bread and breakfast in Truxton or Craddock?
Well, you can have them in.
Or Parkia.
Why?
Well, just go back, if, if council wants this, this is what we considered an error in the code creation, okay?
How about they can be opened in, in a historic district? That's what those two have in common.
That's what you have now. That's what you want. What happened was, in the prior ordinance, it was restricted to two neighborhoods. When the new code came out, it dropped that restriction and left it to all of them. And that was not part of a discussion to do that. It was an error in transcribing the old code over to the new.
I feel it should be...
So, if you want to add it, you leave it as is, that leaves it open for everyone, and you certainly do that.
Well, I think it should be restricted, not to everyone.
Well, that's what, that's what there is.
But there are other districts that could be determined as restrictive, when you look at Truxton.
The determination's fine.
Truxton's a historic district.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, it shouldn't be just restricted to Old Town and Port Norfolk.
And Port Norfolk, I concur with that.
It should be allowed in any historic district to put it in a positive...
That's as it is currently.
That's fine.
As long as it's a historic district.
What we're saying is if it's.
We need to make sure we define it.
I want to get clear.
You want to open one?
Okay, let's make that change.
Where's the consensus on this?
It's historic.
Historic district.
So we take this one out?
Take that out.
Take it out.
Got it.
Okay.
But wait, is the current code allow them in Churchill?
Just in the historic districts.
Oh, that's fine.
And I know what I was saying, the old regulations just said Old Town and Port Norfolk. When the new code got drafted, they left that piece out of the code, and so it left it open for all the historic districts. So if you, we're just, that was a correction, we're looking at it, it wasn't something that was.
It's part of it, Mike.
All right, good.
And this last one, this is the garage setbacks. I think that's pretty straightforward. The current code has the garage, if it's attached to the house, it's required to be set back off of the house. They have a lot of houses in Portland that aren't built that way. Most of Churchill, for example, the ranch homes. And the idea is just to let the garages come back flush to the front of the sod to match up with the prevailing construction pattern of home designs. Pretty straightforward on that one.
Do you have, this is the last slide, right?
Um, I think we're just about there. Check one.
This is it, I didn't see that last one.
Bet. You've given us, this was a good, healthy discussion, because you've given us direction. We'll memorialize your consensus and get it out to you on Friday. We'll bring it back on Monday, just to make sure that we got the language right, and then it'll be on your agenda on the 26th.
What's that top line up there about back taxes?
Okay.
Oh.
Why are we doing this page?
Yeah, we are. John's trying to do something else, but we are. Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't see that slide.
What's that, allow options for applicants?
Here's the circumstances. We are spending a lot of time in the planning department as tax collector, we're working very closely with city treasurer, and we are trying, to the greatest extent possible, to collect taxes on applications as they come in the door, whether it be a rezoning, subdivision plat, you name it. One of the things we're finding, though, on some of these larger projects where there's a parcel that had back taxes on it accrued by either a foreclosed on prior owner, or an owner who's not, you know, available to really financially get involved in the process, our current code would prevent an incoming applicant, or at least make it very difficult for an incoming applicant to apply because their back tax is owed. And so I'll give an example, if somebody's going to use permit for a group housing project, and the piece of property, this is a real-life example, so we'll just do this one, $85,000 or so dollars back taxes owed on the property, and the incoming applicant says, well, I'll take care of that, once I've got my approval in hand, and I go to close, but I'm not going to pay $85,000 in back taxes, and then city council turns me down. So what we're saying is we want to have additional options, and what those typically would be are the kind of conditions we're putting in now. We'd like to memorialize it in the code to say, before they get a building permit, whatever we would negotiate, but it would be a restriction that before any construction activity took place, or things of that nature, that all the taxes are brought up to current, so that investors coming in can move forward, because that is becoming an impediment to reinvestment in some of these.
Okay, but it can't be a negotiation, it's got to be set before, it's got to be something set in stone.
I don't see how you're going to allow them to change the zoning or use of the property with back taxes.
Because it can't be negotiated, because that means you'll be doing something different for everybody who comes in. So what, if we're going to do something, it's got to be the same for everybody.
It will not be negotiated, what this does.
That's what he said.
It gives them the option.
It gives, well, let me explain, this gives options in the application process, either via proffer, which council would have to accept, or via use permit condition, which council would apply.
But if I wanted to sell my property, and this was a deal killer, I need to come with either five thousand, I'd pay the taxes on it.
That's right.
I agree.
That's right.
We shouldn't get lenient on the.
We got an issue right now with the Walmart trying to come over there, and we got the same.
You were there.
That didn't happen either. We need to get the taxes paid.
Well, that's fine, but remember, the example we're giving was a multifamily residential unit, that the developer was going to buy the land, but the land had to be rezoned, had to get, go through the zoning process. This is a project that you wanted, but the developer was not willing to take the risk of going through the process of acquiring the land if he couldn't get it rezoned.
I don't blame you. But the landowner needs to pay the back taxes so he can convey the property to the developer.
And negotiating it between the developer and the landowner, maybe you deduct the taxes off the sale of the property.
And take it from closing.
Take it from closing.
Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying, which is, I'm not saying give anybody a tax break. Taxes get paid one way or the other. This is just a way of facilitating the zoning permit.
I understand why.
Me and you had this conversation. We're talking about another city. Suffolk, don't let you rezone anything until the taxes are paid.
Well, that's fine, and that's.
Just like use permits, we shouldn't be granting use permits to people that owe money.
This is absolutely okay. We'll take this one off.
All right.
Everybody agree with that? I think so.
I think we're good.
What about the grandfather pre-existing use for required to obtain a use permit? Now required.
Yeah, this is an issue, again, this is pretty standard zoning practice, it was in our old code, not in our current code. If you have, if you've got a use permit, and say you came back to the city, and in fact you recently had an application for a funeral home, very similar kind of set of circumstances. But let's say you came through, got a use permit, and then the code got changed down the road, instead you redid the code. That use, or if you had a use, and we create, change the code, and make it a use permit use. Okay, so you go from an existing non-use permit required use to use to now required use permit. What that says is, we'll treat you as if you had a use permit. So they are not treated as a non-conforming use, because once they get into that sort of non-conform use status, they have a very hard time trying to make property improvements to maintain and expand their business, because we treat them as if they're non-conforming as opposed to as if they had a use permit.
Yeah, because we changed our rules, not anything they did.
Yeah, but they will have to come in now and get a use permit?
No.
No, they already have.
They wouldn't.
They don't today.
As long as they've been doing that practice for.
They're treated as if they have one.
Right.
They're treated like a conforming use.
But it's got to have had that use for, within a two-year period, is that correct?
No, this would, well, it would have to be a continuing use. Yeah, it would have had to been a continuing use.
In other words, if it hadn't been used for that in excess of two years.
Start over.
It got to start over.
And that's just.
All right, that's good, that's good.
Yeah. And then this last one, like we've mentioned, the staff design committee, again, trying to, when the places in the code where it calls on the planning director to act as, you know, all these design issues, to do it by a group as opposed to do it by a single person.
Can you give me an example of number three?
Yeah, I want to hear that, too.
Yeah.
Can you go down and get, go ahead on down?
Yeah, well, we, let's not skip.
Instead of jumping on.
Start at number one.
I thought we were getting right in, I just, you know, sorry.
Okay. The leak sale, let's go through the, we'll get out a list. I'll go for backpacks, I think we've covered that. Sales of public rights, I think you're all aware that the zoning code authority ends at the right-of-way line, okay? It's private property regulated, when you get to the streets and sidewalks, that's chapter 32 of the city code, it's not the zoning code. Yet we have things in our zoning code that restrict things in the right-of-way, and this is just removing things that are not under the zoning administrators or the zoning ordinance's authority. There are just a number of things that got put into the code that should not have been in there, because it's outside of the bounds of authority. So that's just a cleanup. Third one there, conflict turning front light, we have a couple of different, as you know, this code has multiple sections, has multiple different ways we look at issues, forgetting the fact we also have a subdivision ordinance that does some of the same thing. We have a couple of places in the code where it defines what your front of your lot is, and they're in conflict. The two sections that define what your front yard, they don't read the same. And what we're going to do is get them so that we all know what we're talking about for describing your front yard, no matter what part of the code you're in, it's defined the same. And that's all it is, it's just a language conflict in the code. Another two, massage parlor, I mean tattoo parlors, massage therapy, I mean, these are used to have been around for a long time, they've pretty much become mainstream from back in the days when they were treated differently. All the rest of Hampton Roads, almost everywhere, these things are now basically treated as by right uses, they're in the malls, things of that nature. So the idea being that we just could have moved away from having a use permit requirement for those types, especially these are regulated by the state, especially massage therapy for health activity. We've been through the same with the use permit, and then staff design committee, so we've covered.
All right. We're good.
And I've got to walk down.
Okay, go forth, we're good.
Don't you think that we were trying to hide this page? I thought we were adding.
All right, thank you very much.
I was going to say, thank you for the guidance, because this is useful for us, and we'll memorialize the discussion and send it out by Friday. And we'll re-put it back on the agenda for Monday to make sure it's still good to go, on your agenda for Tuesday for a brief.
Are there any changes in lot size requirements for single-family and multifamily?
I can tell you that we're looking at those, we didn't propose any of this group, as much as we're, just so you're aware, we're going to work differently, I think, how we bring back to you, since we're working in such large volumes of changes. We are looking at the lot size configuration, some of the single-family, for example, got very small in the new ordinance. So we're going to, as part of the overall process, we'll revisit all of the dimensional standards before we get to the code.
All right. All right, the next item is a briefing on our draft legislative program. And Sherri's going to come up. Again, this is draft.
Can we switch and do the OPEB piece? I got to leave, and I really want to stay for the OPEB piece. Can we do this? Sherri, do you mind?
I don't.
Rose, and she comes up.
Got a kid in the pool plate.
This goes back to January 2013, when we told you that we're working on pension obligation bonds, and then the next is OPEB. The OPEB, what drives OPEB are our health costs for retirees. We've given you a series of briefing, we're getting close to the point where we're going to be pulling the trigger to start reducing our $221 million OPEB liability. Remember, there are two categories of retirees age-wise, those that are pre-65, and those that are post-65. Why the two categories? When you're post-65, you get a chance to save money by going with Medicare and going with Medi-Gap insurance. And I can tell you, I know you don't think I look that old, but I'm in that category, and we're saving $170 a month.
Some of you are too young to know about it.
Is this going to address the communication with those, with the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ross?
Good evening, Mayor Ray, Vice Mayor Terry, members of council. Just to get you all started on the briefing purpose and the recap, what Mr. Rowe had stated, the point of this presentation is going to address to you all what changes we've already implemented to address this OPEB liability, but specifically as it relates to the retiree health insurance piece. So as you all know, back in July of 2014, we established some tenure requirements for our active employees, and these are going to be our employees who would later retire with the city of Portsmouth. So we established them in two criterias. One would be the Medicare ineligible retirees, which would be the people who Mr. Rowe refers to as pre-65, so right now they're employees, but when they retired, if they were Medicare ineligible, they'd be pre-65. And then you have the group of employees who are already Medicare eligible, which would be their post-65. So, effective April 1, 2015, we're going to be introducing a new approach for our Medicare eligible retirees and our Medicare eligible spouses, okay? And this is for those Medicare eligible retirees and spouses who are enrolled in the city's medical insurance. For the retirees who are pre-65, as we embark on this change, for the retirees who are pre-65, there are no changes for them. Because remember, this is Medicare eligible retirees and spouses, not those that are ineligible. So for the folks that are pre-65, there are no changes. So we want to make sure we pointed that out to you. So now, as we talk about the retirees who are eligible for Medicare, and the spouses who are eligible for Medicare, we are currently going through, or we are going to be going through a retiree open enrollment period as we do every year, and for this open enrollment period, those changes that these retirees will get to elect will take effect January 1, 2015, and they will remain in effect through March 31, 2015. Okay, because then as of April 1, 2015, we're going to have this new approach and this transition happen. All right, so, beginning in January 2015, we are going to be sending out some additional information, more detailed information to our retirees who are enrolled in the city's plan, who are post-65, so that they have information on what these changes are all about. And it's going to include information about this educational meeting that we're going to schedule, and it's going to provide an opportunity for retirees to come out, learn more about this new approach, and get all their questions answered. Okay, so that information is coming. We are going to do that in January, because we're going to do it after open enrollment is over. So we're going to get through our open enrollment period, so that it's less confusion, get them through that, get their elections in place for the 2015 plan year, then we'll give them information for January that will take them through March 31. Okay? Again, there's going to be no changes as it relates to dental and vision and legal services. Okay, so this, these changes that we're talking about impacts medical only, there will be no changes to the city offering the dental division plan and the legal services.
Which they pay 100% anyway, actually.
Right. Now, for eligible retirees, there's going to be a fixed monthly city contribution that the city will give for those retirees who lose coverage come April 1. So as they transition off the city's plan, there will be a fixed monthly contribution that the city will give, and that amount will be determined on an annual basis.
Cool.
Okay? Okay, so now as we get into the Medicare eligible retirees and their spouses, this just gives you a little overview of what's, what kind of assistance is going to come for our retirees. And this level of one-on-one assistance is going to be from beginning to end and beyond. Okay, so we are committed to making sure that our retirees get all the information they need, that they're informed, and that they get the assistance they need. Okay, so they're going to be receiving personalized assistance from trained benefit advisors, and this will take place from January to March 2015. And when I say trained personalized advisor, I mean, they're going to get one-on-one assistance. They're going to get assistance with knowing what their medical needs are, their prescription needs, their budget constraints, and help them work their way through which plans are best to fit those unique medical needs, prescription needs, and their budget. Okay? And so they'll get an opportunity to work one-on-one, it'll take them from questions all the way through enrollment, to getting enrolled in a plan. And then after that, if they should need it, or have additional questions throughout the year, even after they're enrolled, they will still be able to get assistance through this process. Okay, so there will still be advocates on board to help them year-round.
Who's providing the assistance?
Who's supervising it?
Who's going to provide it?
Our staff, yeah. But we're using licensed private sector folks that we contract with, and it will be very high-touch. And the way it will operate is that come January 1, they'll have all of our post-65 employees already in their database. We will reach out for a public education program for those retirees. They will end up having Medicare Part A and D, and then they'll have a choice for what to fill in the gap. And it's called Medi-Gap insurance, and they have plans A through F, with F being the Cadillac. There are some 90 different private companies or more that offer A through F, and those are established by law, what the Plan A offers, Plan B, Plan C, Plan F. Plan F is the Cadillac. The only difference is, is that Company A may charge $7 higher premium than Company B, and Company C may be lower than both A and B. And so we'll work with each retiree to find out which plan works best for them. And on the average, with paying Medicare A and B, and picking even Plan F, they'll save anywhere from $120 to $170 a month from what they're paying right now just to be on our plan. Just to be on our plan.
What's the cost of providing the private sector consultation?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Who pays for it?
They get reimbursed on the back end.
Who's the, who's the back end?
The insurance companies.
Okay.
But the long and short of this whole process is the retiree should be paying less money per month out of their own pocket.
Exactly.
And the city's spending less money out of the collective pocket.
That's right.
Exactly, and one more component, which really is the big one, it moves, it reduces our OPEB liability, because then there are no longer liabilities.
Liability at all.
At all. And the way this works, too, technology, if I can call in, they recognize my number first. They send me to the last person. Hello, John, how's your wife Carol? How can I help you today? If that caller who handled me last time is busy, John, Charlie is busy, I can take a message. It's going to be almost as if they're next door.
Now, people 65 presently and still working, they don't have to transition this.
No, they're active employees.
If you pull it in, you're.
Question.
Yeah. Can you get the line? I'm sorry, sir.
You're 65, you're 64, your spouse is 61, you go through 65, because you're both, she's covered on the city plan. You retired, you're 65, what happens with your spouse?
They stay in the city plan until they age out.
Okay.
Let's say, let's do one that's, you're 66 and retired, and your wife and your spouse is 30.
Dream on.
Could happen.
I was waiting for someone to say something. The spouse stays in the city plan until that spouse, he or she, turns 65.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
And so what lies ahead, you know, each open enrollment's for every plan, whether you're retired or not. So we send out the letters to all of our retirees saying it's open retirement, open enrollment. If you're post, I mean, if you're pre-65 and you don't want to change your plan, you tear up the letter, okay? If you're pre-65 and you want to change your status, you come in and change the status. If you're post-65 and you don't want to change your status for January, February, March, you throw it away. If you're post-65, and let's say you no longer, your spouse is no longer alive, and you want to change your status, you change it for January, February, March. Come April 1, we'll be in the new concept. And so this is a company that's done this from coast to coast, they've done it from Hampton Roads, we've looked at them really good, and it, no retiree's going to be left behind that's post-65 in this. Okay?
This is also one-on-one, so that I'm talking to Mr. Insurance about my cancer and my high blood pressure and whatever, and the next guy's talking about his, he's really[1750.66] healthy. It's, it's individualized for each one.
Absolutely. And that's why it's important for us to have that information in the database so that they're not saying, "What's your name again, and who are you, and how old's your spouse?" They already got that information captured. All right? Okay.
Okay. So just to wrap it up, this is the slide that shows you next steps. As we talked about, the retiree open enrollment period, it's going to be taking place November 14 through November 25. So that's the period of time where retirees can make their elections that will take effect January 1. And again, if they're Medicare-eligible, then it'll run through March 31, 2015. Just as Mr. Rose stated, we're going to be sending letters to all the post-65 retirees in their open enrollment packets. And again, this transition would take place April 1 with no break-in coverage for the retirees.
All righty.
Okay?
Ready for the next item? All right, Sherry will come up to the lectern. This is our draft legislative package. Sherry has done a job of contacting all the departments, all of our agencies, so listing both recommendations for new legislation and pending policy issues that lie ahead. So what we'll give you are, are the policy issues that, that everybody is concerned about, and then the post-legislative changes. And then, lastly, at the end, we'll report on the citizens' comments that we received.
I got one question before we go any, um, far as, I should have asked this earlier, but, um, what are we hearing from the state far as cuts?
Okay, that's a good question. Can you turn the light back on? I'm sorry.
And have we thought about anything to soften that blow or offset it?
Yeah. Want to speak to that? Um, that's me, Sherry, members of council today. We are in, we're in, in a time where things are moving right as we speak. Currently, the General Assembly is meeting as I speak. They went into session at 7:00 P.M. They're going back to this evening, they went there to do the judges, and to tweak the budget. Currently, there is an extra $50 million hold in the budget, which came from when they did their calculations earlier in the year. They were going to, and I was going to speak to that a little bit in here, but they were going to delay the transferring of this amount of money from the transportation fund, from the general fund. Problem came up legally with the bonds. They, bond people became kind of sketchy about it. So it's been a decision amongst the leadership that they weren't going to do that. So they're not going to delay this transfer, so now they have to find how to plug that hold as well. We were supposed to, when I spoke to the Department of Budget and Planning, we were supposed to have found out as of the 7th of November what our share of the cost of the $30 million return of state aid to localities would have been. That figure hasn't come out yet, and I believe it's because of this other amount that's coming out. And so, it'll probably, we're hoping, it's not going to hit our local governments that hard, but it's thought that the $30 million is going to either increase back to $60 million where it was before, or they're going to have to go in and pull money out of K-12 education, which was untouched before. That's for '15. Going forward to '16, you've got that still over $2 billion worth of cuts they've got to locate, so everything's on the table.
$2 billion, right?
Yes, that's a little over $2.
Yeah, a little big.
No, no, no. I've been tougher.
Well, you go away.
Shall I continue?
And he says he doesn't want to mess with the education piece, but if he does it, is he's going to have to complete other.
Government services.
Services, correct.
Yeah, and he did, when speaking of Governor McAuliffe, I believe, when you say he?
Yeah.
I have heard him say that he didn't want to touch it, but as of the 2016 budget, everything was on the table. So we'll be in a defensive posture, once again, trying to protect our coffers.
And I've been pushing Sherry to get us the milestones for what the state's going to do. And so, as soon as we get that, I will send it on to y'all. Again, as she said, it's in a state of flux. I mean, they're trying to figure out, you know, where they are. Does this help, and, does this answer your question? I, I think it's pretty shabby when the state tries to balance its budget on the backs of local government, and that's where this is headed.
John, I like to say this, having worked with Sherry through Virginia First Cities Program and watched the way she's carried the message through the time for the city of Portsmouth, not only Portsmouth, but the Tidewater area as such. We are very blessed.
We are.
To have this young lady, as knowledgeable as she is, and she has the contact all the way up to the governor's office, and I want you to know that. I was glad that she let me hang on to her coattail to learn some of the things that are going on there. And we have been blessed and privileged in the city of Portsmouth because of the messages that she's been able to go right through to the top and talk to the people that are there to make the decisions. And I just had to take this opportunity to say that because you let me fall on your coattail, because I would have never known that was what your job is all about. And I think a lot of times, we take for granted the things that happen within our cities. But we have one of the strongest persons on the Hill, and they're, they recognize her.
Amen.
Whatever department she goes in, they know Sherry Neal.
Yes, ma'am.
She's a little bitty lady in stature, but she carries a big stick when she walks into those legislative committees, and I wanted y'all to know that. We got a stink.
All right.
Okay?
Seen it firsthand.
That's right, I saw her.
I had to.
I know, you know what I'm talking about, don't you, babe?
Right. I thank you for your vote of confidence, and I've learned quite a bit from you as well, so it's mutual, so thank you.
Your next question is, so how much is my raise?
Yeah.
Okay, move right along.
There you go. See, in your, your packages, the information, so I'm not going to prolong this because you're pretty much familiar with everything that's in here. So we're going to start with corporate package. Basically, just be simply walking you through our corporate package, which is going to be our internal city submissions. And then when we complete that, we'll share with you the few submissions that we did receive from the citizens for your consideration in our package. So again, this is our corporate 2015 draft of legislative package.
No problem.
We have nine public policy statements that begin in our, in our package as it's been drafted, beginning with the elimination of the B-Pole and down to the Jordan Bridge budget language that occurred at the end of last budget season. A lot of these statements you've seen before in your previous presentations, those items that you just saw, the same nine, and our positions on them, whether we oppose them, we oppose them if they're taking money away from us, we support them if they're going to give us money, basically. The Jordan Bridge, we would like to see that budget language amended or eliminated.
Or just arrest the guys that had a change.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Or arrest the guys that had a change.
Okay. Also, in our legislative package, did I go to the wrong place? Also.
I mean, that's our two.
Following our public policy statements that are local, state, and regional in nature, then we have our five legislative requests from the flooding, which you've seen before. And you've seen all of these in your last presentation, except for maybe four and five, which is the probable cause, and the H1 for the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission code change. Again, just to recap, what we're requesting here on the flooding piece is that we have a code amendment done to the real estate disclosure portion of the Virginia Code, making it mandatory that disclosure of flooding incidences to potential buyers. Currently, the only thing that's mandatory for disclosure under the Real Estate Disclosure Act is Chinese drywall and methamphetamine production. So we feel that flooding is just as big of an issue, yes.
The Churchland Bridge, I see, how are we coming along with that, John?
Okay, you skipping ahead?
No, you already passed it.
Oh, no. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to elaborate a little bit on this one.
All right, no problem.
On the Board of Zoning Appeals, again, this one is to, this will be special legislation. Special legislation requires two-thirds votes of both houses. It's special legislation because we're asking specifically, unfortunately, to have the same powers that the General Assembly to allow our council to appoint members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Churchland Bridge, priority funding. This is a matter that was in our package last year. At the end of the General Assembly session, there was some budget language that was included directing VDOT to, directing VDOT to do a study or to examine ways in which we can get funding for it, state and federal funding. That report was supposed to have been due on the 1st of October. That report is now overdue. I just checked it again tonight, it's still not in. I did some backchecking. I found out that VDOT had completed their report, they sent it to the Secretary of Transportation. The Secretary of Transportation reviewed it, sent it back to VDOT for some more work. So we're still waiting to see what happened with that. We did put in for the Tiger Grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive that.
James, will you?
Yes, someone else you can elusive.
We also have a situation, too, where some revenue-sharing money was allocated to the Victory Village Project. And it looks like those funds are not going to get used, and we're working to transfer those funds to the Churchland Bridge. You want?
Okay. Good evening. Currently, we are still working on design for the bridge. By the end of the year, we'll probably be around 60%. And so, that's that next target stage that we have for VDOT, to get plans off to VDOT for their review. And after those plans are submitted at that stage, then is our, our public hearing that we have with that, that large formal setting, which we have at the TCC. We just submitted, as you voted on at your last meeting, another application for revenue-sharing. If we do not get federal funding, it'll be one more round of revenue-sharing will get us to the point where we can advertise for that project. We are currently still actively working with VDOT to identify potential federal funds, and so that's just an ongoing process. Should we get federal funding, the target deadline that we have for advertisement in 2016 would likely be pushed back if there's some other criteria that we'd have to go through once we get federal funding.
And as you know, reported that I'm having quarterly meetings with our team and the district administrator for the Hampton Roads District. We have one coming up on the 17th?
19th.
19th. And we'll, it'll be here, and this will be topic number one that we discuss with him.
How often is VDOT inspecting the bridge structurally?
They don't, we do.
We do.
We inspect it yearly.
So we're inspecting it? They, they have no oversight?
We send the report to VDOT.
Okay. When you see that, that crew on the bridge, and it's got an arm that goes under a mechanical arm, that's the inspection that's being done.
And we inspect Churchland Bridge and Paradise Creek Bridge annually, our other bridges every two years.
Have we changed the weight limit on the bridge?
No. The weight is.
It's not needed?
Yeah.
No. Not what we had.
My base will be inspected.
Sure. Well, so while we're not asking the General Assembly for this $21 million, we're trying to keep the, we're keeping the issue in the forefront so that it's a priority and that they need to help us find some kind of way to address this matter. The one that you didn't see before was on probable cause. The issue here is that when the arresting officer is called away for some other purposes and the investigating detective takes over, when the investigating detective takes the person that was apprehended in front of the magistrate and asks, "Were you the, according to the code, follows the code," and he asks, "Were you the arresting officer?" When the detective says, "No," the magistrate's unable to issue a warrant. So this is basically addressing that, saying that, you know, to amend this code section to allow the investigating and the charging detective to also be able to present in front of the magistrate to get a warrant.
Was this, if that's the case, how have we been getting around that?
Good evening. Currently, the way that we've been getting around that is by calling the officer back in that actually put their hands on the individual. A lot of times, overnight, an arrest will be made, the detective then gets called to the scene to handle the incident. But because of the interviewing process and all of the evidence handling, it might be 2 o'clock in the afternoon before warrants are actually sought. So we'll call the midnight shift officer in, and they'll have to, we have to wake them up.
So this is the whole Commonwealth operates this way? Or is this us?
We haven't seen that it's been a problem in other jurisdictions, but lately, for the last several months, we've had probably about five or six.
That's right.
Is that, is that open to interpretation by the magistrate? Or are different magistrates interpreting it differently?
The code is pretty clear right now as to what's required. It does say the arresting officer has to take the person before the magistrate. The intent of the code, I think, is to make sure that there's been some sort of judicial authority that says that taking the person into custody was justified without a warrant. It only applies in those cases where we arrest somebody that doesn't have a warrant on file. So I'm not sure why it hasn't come up more in the past, but in the last six months or so, it's been a number of instances.
Sounds sensible.
We've been working with the, a number of agencies within the state, trying to get information from them. I'm not aware of it happening statewide, but hopefully, this will solve the problem we've been having.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
And this is a caveat, we've been in touch with their association and told that they support this mess as well, so we'll get support through their association. The Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, or more fondly known as HR-TAC, the issue, this particular request is something that's being included or, and even, either included, has been included or is being considered for inclusion by our sister cities who are members of HR-TAC. It also came out of the TPO and their legislative, HR TPO, Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, out of their legislative package, and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, in their legislative package. The issue here is that the way the legislation was drafted, only the chief operating, the chief, elected official, thank you, is able to serve on the board.
And let me say, that's in cities, that's the mayor. In counties, it's the chairman of the county board of supervisors.
Yes. So the way that the voting is structured, there's weighted voting, so it's two-thirds vote plus two-thirds representation. If for some reason the elected official is unable to attend, kind of throws the voting off. So we're asking them to go back and revisit this to allow for an alternate elected official to be able to fill in in the case the chief elected official is not there, or I include it by proxy, which is a way that the General Assembly actually operates. If they're at, on a committee meeting and they're not able to stay, they give their proxy to one of their members, and they'll vote on their behalf, so they're still getting the representation. So it's a suggestion.
I like the part where you do office instead of the proxy.
Where you actually put another person in?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either way, it's probably not going to fly, but we're pushing it either way.
That would be or. So, so if you were at the meeting and had to leave, you could ping your proxy out to...
Yeah, that's how the General Assembly operates.
And they can vote it off, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's always good for the goose, it's not good for the gander when it comes to General Assembly and local government. But we really do need an alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should, yeah, I agree.
Okay, and finally, for the state package, we've got the nine legislative endorsements, and we generally do endorse the packages of the organizations that we are affiliated with, and in no way is this the, the end of it all. I mean, there are others out there, we didn't list them all, but in your package, you do give us language to allow the city manager or his designee to act on behalf of the legislative or budgetary matter that, matter that should arise. So that kind of gives us a cut of, a blank coverage.
Sherry, one thing, it's like chiming, when we look at the area of the Virginia First Cities, this is something many times our locally elected officials do not think about getting involved with these things. If it's none, then pack your backyard. But it's to your advantage to be involved and go to those meetings. Through the years, I went through, and you really get a good understanding of how they operate to get things done. And once they recognize your presence there, they begin to come to and call you about things. And if you don't stay engaged, you don't always get all the nuts and bolts in terms... And if you don't stay engaged, you don't always get all the nuts and bolts in terms, you know where I'm coming from, I'm seeing my butter over my bum. You don't always get all of the information that you need that will impact your area. And a lot of time, as elected officials, we do not go out of our backyard to look at the impact of how it affects the state and it impacts your area. So I would suggest that we branch out and do more of that. I'm glad I had tutors.
And if I may, with your leaving, retiring, the seat will be open for another council person, so...
You need somebody there.
...will decide to come and fill Ms. Randall's spot on that committee commission. All right, turning now quickly to the federal legislative package. A lot of these positions were situated prior to the election, which we all know was an interesting turnout.
Very interesting.
And there's a big change going on in Washington, which will probably increase gridlock to some extent, though some people feel that it won't. Those issues that are up there are still germane to our, to our core, to our considerations. And just before coming in here, I received this huge packet of information from our federal lobbyists on what they perceive the changes are going to be, how they're going to impact us at a federal level.
And we'll send that to you.
Yeah, and just quickly, I just want to note that, you know, they were talking about the continuing resolution for funding government. It expires on December 11th. They're thinking that, and the lame duck session ends on the 13th, the 12th of December. So, you know, they've got a couple of scenarios that they're running through as to what they think may happen as far as refunding of government. So if Mr. Roosevelt said, you'll get that information, we'll send it to you. I want to point out something quickly on this particular one. The Highway Transportation Fund, that runs out spring 2015, that's the reissue. And that's a big one for us, for our transportation funds that come down from the federal government. And the other one is the Marketplace Reform Act. That was included in the House Bill 2013 to help raise funds, and what actually that is, was taxing internet sales. And the way that the bill, the legislation passed was that pending passage of this on Congress, the monies that they projected was going to come down from that was going to help fund transportation statewide. Some of that money was going to come down to transit as well. Something else that just came hot off the presses before I walked in here is that Bonner killed it. So that's going to be another hole in the budget that we're going to have to look at and fill in. So, and the beat goes on. Yeah, Bonner. Speaker Bonner, he killed it. So here are your key dates moving forward. Looking to adopt the package on your 25th meeting by resolution for packages. We're kind of running short on time to put in our legislative request. Prefiling is going to come to an end early in December.
Have we got the, the information from citizens' input?
We do. Let me take this chance. Citizens don't have to come through us or you if they want the General Assembly. In fact, they probably have a better chance, because they vote directly and they contribute money. And so it's nice of you to ask for their input, but by no means, if they don't give you input, or if you don't even consider their input, you have not closed the door, because they can go to any member of the General Assembly, there are 140 of them, and ask the same thing that we ask, can you put a bill in for me? And it happens all the time. So we, we styled this presentation in two categories. One, the corporate side, this is what the municipal corporations' package is, okay? And then, because we did ask for citizens' input, you got it. But most of that stuff is political stuff, and you've got to decide whether or not you see any wisdom in what's being suggested. So it's not in the corporate side of the presentation, and you'll see the politics of it playing when we get to that, that second part.
And if I may, to tell off of what John was saying, I kind of picked around with my, my colleagues, we're the only city that does this this way.
Yeah. And you'll see, I mean, you have a request that you go to a ward system.
That's right.
I'm not going to have a recommendation on that. If a citizen wants to have that, then, you know, go to the delegate, go to the senator. But as your city manager, ethically, I cannot be involved in that.
So, as council requested, we again opened the door for citizens to submit any suggestions for your consideration for inclusion in our package. Ran for a little over 30 days, and I even extended it past my deadline to receive input. And these are the three that we received. Charter change request, to change voting patterns in Portsmouth to ward systems from being at large.
And the rationale, all this is language from the citizens, there's no spend put on it by, by staff.
That's right.
Three of us are out.
At least two of y'all are.
That's right.
All right, go to the next question.
That's right.
Next request, to give school boards, school boards the taxing authority.
Any two?
No, the mayor was...
Oh, the mayor's secretary.
Here, the secretary's flying for the mayor.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
To give school boards taxing authority. And the last one is a constitutional amendment to allow people who are incarcerated the right to vote. It's up to council, whether decide whether or not you want to include this in your package going forward, so we need some direction.
All right, we'll have this specific on your agenda for adoption at your next meeting.
You want to send you something later about this, or you want to just...
I just said, I don't know. I said, not me.
Not me.
She said, he said, do you want this included? I said, not.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I think that's, that's a consensus.
Definitely not.
Yep.
Hey, I got one more. What about giving up your seat to run against, if you decide to run for the mayor's seat? You're a council person, you have to give your seat up.
You've already fixed that, I think.
Not hardly.
You want to go back the old way?
No.
The old way is the way you have.
It's the same way it was. No.
No, it went up, but it, but it didn't, it didn't make it. It went up.
It didn't make it.
Somebody decided that the citizens of Portsmouth didn't want that.
No.
Was that, I said somebody decided to...
You don't want to.
You put it back up?
I can put it back up again. It's always, I am.
I've got a charter change, George.
And if I remember correctly, the legislative...
It didn't get out of...
This is the way it always was, and then there was, there was some talk about changing it to not requiring the, the council member to give up their seat, and then it was ultimately decided...
That they wouldn't.
That it wouldn't. That they would, that they would still have to give up their seat, so nothing changed.
I'm good with resubmitting it.
Yeah, I am.
Well, let me tell you, there's a protocol for charter changes. It requires either a referendum...
That's right.
...or in lieu of a referendum, a public hearing. And most local governments go with a public hearing, not the referendum. I, very rarely do you have the referendum. Then you are, then you got to meet the requirements for the advertisement. You got to advertise the language. We assume that the language would be the same. I don't know if there's enough time between now and... We might...
We already have the language, so we, you don't have to reinvent that.
Well, it's a matter of whether you have enough time to do all the ads that you have to, to put in, and then have your hearing, and then get it up to the General Assembly.
How did you get that before? Because I don't remember, I don't remember.
Depends on the drop dead date, Cherry.
On charter changes, the first day.
It's when we did the whole revamp.
Charter changes still first day.
Which is...
January the 14th, 2013. The second Wednesday in January.
Got over two months.
You have prefiling deadlines, right? Now, the prefiling deadlines that the, that the legislators deal with up until, I think, maybe the first week of December.
Right.
They can submit as much legislation as they want, but after that, they have a limited amount that they can put in.
But it's still...
So then you, you can still put it in, but then they have to do it by, they have to get permission. The other thing I wanted to say on that, we still have the same legislators we had the last time we carried that up there, if I may, and they didn't support it.
They are going to support it.
And that's what happened.
They might have had a change of heart.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, you never know.
Give us some direction.
Committees have changed since then.
Want us to try to put it on the calendar, is that what?
Not that much, but let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
What are we putting on the calendar? I need some clarity.
It's a public hearing for, that's required by, by state law on a charter change. And it specifies how you advertise it, how much time. And so the question is, do we have enough time to have the public hearing to get you to vote on it, so that it can be filed on the, by the first day of the General Assembly? My intuition tells me that you, you have enough time. My intuition tells me that someone may just go ahead and put this in their pocket and it never gets filed.
Well, can we see to it that it does get filed?
We must talk to our legislators to do that.
You can't legislate that it be filed.
No.
Well, we can give it to one of our legislators with...
And this is for the mayor.
...the consensus of council that we want it filed. Let them explain to the people why they didn't carry the mail.
But is that what you want us to do, is to...
Not me.
Yes, yes.
Not me. I think it ought to be brought up during the time, the individual position, as it comes up. I don't feel...
Paige is good with it, so we got four.
You go with your four, and I'm going to be out there campaigning against it. I have to cheer about it now.
Let her show what the calendar is.
And you know, you know why, too. Thank you.
We have a need for a closed session for boards and commissions and a legal matter.
Need to go into closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-711. For the following purpose, consultation of legal counsel briefing by staff concerning a matter of actual litigation as permitted under subsection A7, and discussion concerning candidates for appointment of city boards and commissions as permitted under subsection A1. Mr. Cherry? Mr. Emmett? Mr. Meach?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Emmett?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
No.
You don't want to go in close? You don't want to go in close?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Mayor, right, is that... We are in closed session, thank you.